Okay, good morning, everybody. All our virtual school board members, well, the good ones are here. And I thank you for attending today and everyone else. We're here for a quick seminar, kind of more of a refresher for. We're going to try our best for a hard stop at nine fifty, I've been told. Otherwise, I get daggers on the back of the room. So I'm David Baggett at the General Counsel for Virtual School. You'll happily be hearing mostly other voices today. The agenda. We're going to take a quick peek backwards and then forward. Okay, from the 2019 recommendations that the FDOE presented some time back after an operational audit, a scented stern type audit that was conducted really by Ernst and Young. You'll remember that. And it's interesting to look back and see what has been accomplished and what is left to be accomplished in the spirit of continuous improvement. We're going to have a bit of an overview, you know, thirty thousand foot type thing. Instructional model and enrollments. You'll hear from Katie Santana and Jason Schultz, Senior Directors of Instruction. You'll hear, I think, from Robin, Chief Academic Officer, and you will hear from Julian Casanias, who is Superintendent of the Florida Scholars Academy, which we staff up for the instructional model. You'll also hear give an overview of procurement and contracting, and that's from Joanne Sarah. And then a quick view of fundamentals, certain fundamentals. And it really will show you where we, how far we've come. Board ops and fundamentals, including the importance of having these seminars as a board for purposes of our ongoing accreditation. And you'll hear from Deputy General Counsel Karen Chastain on that. So let's look to where, where we were. Essentially, when, when you look at the 2019 recommendations, this was like a sixty page report. It looked at everything from finance to audit to legal services to everything. And overall efficiency. There were seven general recommendations. I won't read them here for you, but you can see them. And you can see that these are things that we have focused on now for years and achieved great growth with the enterprise risk management. Just gathering and putting into place actual KPIs. Policies and bylaws, I need not say anything. You know, we have really gone through a great deal of them and straightened them up. And then more of an alignment with the foundation. These were strategic initiatives that the FDOE encouraged this organization to carry up. And it was interesting to look back at this. We really have covered the field on this. But one of the things that jumped out at me this time, when I looked at the 2019 recommendations, is number six with student demand. We just heard yesterday during our agenda review workshop. You know, student choice, parental choice will continue to grow. And I think that the, it's pretty tough in our FEFP world. The way that we have our funding structured for public school kids in the state of Florida. It's kind of hard to restructure things where the money which belongs to the kid, to the qualified K through twelve student, actually follows that student to whatever choice he or she makes, right? So I think we're going to see a lot more of that. And that affects us too, because we were born, as you remember, we, statutorily, we are under student and parent rights to school choice. So it will be interesting. And then another thing, and that, of course, will be driven by student demand and continues to be. But I was interested that we also had, this was five years ago, this report came out, fill in gaps to include juvenile justice education. And you'll hear about that. And we were ecstatic that we got that off the ground. More on that later. Essentially, we have come a long way. This is just David's view of what, how I think we are operating. Again, from my own perspective, it's always the student with this guy here, this Dr. Al Gaze guy. It's always about students. You know, you couldn't be more centered than that. And really, everything that we create, if it doesn't assist students getting here and doing well here, we're focusing on the wrong thing. Okay, and then, of course, helping students is to give them the best and brightest teachers, which you see that we do. We're super proud of this staff. So moving forward, now that we're in a pattern each year of continuous improvement, the strategic plan really does help. And I know that the leadership keeps the board up to speed on that. And here's what the board has to say in formulating it. And that cascades with organization and department-wide goals. The other part of continuous improvement, of course, is always, and it has always been and will, is the creation of our own IP and curriculum. You know, and now you, you have to look at this frontier where artificial intelligence integrates with that. It's really interesting to see that integration. And I think that we really are tip of the spear, at least with K-12 education, when it comes down to that. Okay, I'll say enough. I'm going to turn it over to our instruction folks.
Good morning, members of the board. Excited to see you face to face, first time in body here. So excited to be here this morning. I am Jason Folds, one of your Senior Directors of Instruction.
I'm Katie Santana. Nice to meet you guys and see you in person.
And this morning, we wanted to give you just a quick overview of some of the things going on in instruction, as David mentioned, speaking in terms of enrollments, but also just a brief overview of the main programs that we oversee as well, just to make sure that you are on the same page with us of the types of services and what the programs look like, and see if there's any questions that you have as well. So just briefly, as you know, there's four ways to take a Florida Virtual School course. We're going to talk primarily about the ones on the left, the flex and the full-time model today. And that's what Katie and I oversee. But we do work closely with our virtual franchises, the county virtual schools, as well as FlexPoint Virtual for those tuition-based enrollments and out of the state, to make sure that they have the same supports and instructional resources in place as what we would do here in Florida in our flex and full-time programs. So with that, I'll start you off with this slide. And just on the left, you just see a basic rundown of the differences between flex and full-time. What's funny is a lot of times we talk about the differences. There's actually more similarities, I'd say, but there's two key differences to know about flex and full-time. And it really comes down to the scheduling and what that looks like for a flex student. And who owns the transcript? Who's maintaining the, the permanent record for that student? Because those are the, the two key differentiators. With flex on the left, as you know, the students can start and stop a course at any point in time. So every day, their student's starting new courses, completing and working at a pace that makes sense for them. They can work at a pace that's a little bit more accelerated or slower if they need to. And can start really at any point in the year. They can also take one course supplementally to what they're doing in a brick and mortar setting, or can take up to six courses if they are a home education student, so or anywhere in between. And I think that flexibility is something that appeals to a lot of our families, because they don't have to take all six courses at the same time on a fixed schedule. They can take two or three, work at an accelerated rate, and then pick up the next course after that. As I said, the other key difference is we don't maintain the, the permanent record. That student takes a course with us. And when they complete it, we give that, that grade over to the school and district of record where they record it on the transcript, because most of the students are not taking all their courses with us. They're just taking some. In the full-time program, on the other hand, those students have withdrawn from their school and district of record, and they are with us in either the full-time elementary, middle, or high school. And we do maintain all aspects of their record there and are providing all of the services for those students as we are the only school for them. And they do operate on that hundred and eighty day calendar, more of a traditional setting. But as I said, there's actually a lot more similarities. When it comes down to the instructional model, the relationship between the students and the families and the personalized approach that we have, that's the same regardless of the program. Either one is a school of mastery, working to have that classroom of one for students to really meet their individual needs, regardless of the program. And to dig in a little further on that, I'll hand it over to Katie.
So as Jason was mentioning, and as David stated before, school choice is, you know, what everybody's looking for. And I think with over twenty years of experience, oh, sorry.
Not because we can't hear you.
Okay, so with over, you know, twenty years of experience, we continue to look for ways to meet the students at their level of need and the provide services for what they're looking for and ensure that we are continuing to provide the model that we are always and have been known for, but continue to ensure that what they are seeking and what they're looking for is what we are able to provide. And as you can see, not only do we continue to have that asynchronous and synchronous model, as Jason mentioned, the mastery-based learning, the rolling enrollment that we offer in flex. Currently, full-time is open for enrollment for K eight. We just finished our high school enrollment. That continues to be our most sought-after school of enrollment is our high school-based program. All the different opportunities that you see there and our partnerships with different programs and schools, labs, private schools, public schools throughout the state that we offer. And then the different types of students that we are serving. We continue to provide a great opportunity for students who are subgroup-type populations of students, our special population students, our ESE and our ESOL population. Those continue to grow. We continue to be at the forefront of academic integrity and what that looks like in an online environment with the, you know, infiltration of things like ChatGPT and artificial intelligence. We continue to try to seek out ways for our teachers to counteract what students are trying to do. And, and not necessarily always doing their own work, but trying to ensure that what they provide is in their own words and their own thoughts. And, you know, it's okay to use those tools to, you know, get your thoughts going, but ensuring that what they provide and submit is, is truly their own work. And then our different areas with quality assurance for our different things like accreditation, making sure that what, you know, we inspect what we expect. And what we say we're doing is what we're seeing and hearing in the classrooms. Professional learning opportunities like what we are here to do this week. And then the different areas we are continuing to see, as I think Amy Hall came and presented and showcased with you guys at a board meeting a, a little bit ago, what we're seeing with our student population. And we continue to see school districts and as different areas with a threat management and school safety are on the rise and different students are encountering those aspects. We continue to be a place for students who maybe are seeking an alternative placement are now, you know, coming to us. And so we're welcoming them and trying to make sure that we're a good fit and providing them a, an education that doesn't necessarily result in going to Julian's FSA, so.
So a little background about our enrollments. I wanted to give you an overview of how we ended last year and how things are looking so far this year. So for the flex program, we ended the year just shy of six hundred and twenty-two thousand successful semester completions. And that came to us from just shy of two hundred and twenty-seven students across the state of Florida. You can see the kindergarten and six twelve breakdown there as to how many completions and how many students. And something to really celebrate on this slide is that last bullet point for twenty-three, twenty-four, the eighty-five point eight percent completion rate. That's measuring the success rate for students who started a course with us, became activated, and were actively working in the course, and then successfully completed with a passing grade. And I will tell you that that number is the second highest in FLVS flex history, only second to the twenty-twenty-one school year during the pandemic when students were with us and really had a little bit more limited options and stayed with us. And that was only a fraction of a percent higher than where we landed last year. So we're closing that gap and looking to do that this year, hopefully. As far as this year's numbers, you'll see our initial budget projection is six hundred and seven thousand, seventy-two thousand coming from our elementary and five hundred and thirty-five thousand coming from six twelve. Now, you might be looking at this and thinking that's less than last year's number. So something I want to point out is that the numbers for twenty-three, twenty-four are the actuals. And when we're looking at the budgeted projections, we do tend to go conservatively on those numbers. Looking to outperform those numbers at the end of the year. And that's key, because our teacher staffing and our resources are all based off of that number for that projection. So we always want to run as efficiently as we can with teachers and support staff for the students. Want to make sure that we have the right people in place, but as efficiently as possible. So we usually try to pick a number that's a little bit more conservative and then outperform that. And obviously, as the year goes through, we may adjust that number based on the enrollment trends coming in. But right now, we are looking to surpass that number. So if you see that in a, a report and Cory's talking about that and her reports know that we are, when you see those numbers, even if it's a little lower, we're always working to surpass those.
All right, so in full-time with the three schools, you can see our twenty-three, twenty-four results. And if you've seen our numbers over the last few years, as Jason mentioned, we have pretty much right-sized since COVID gone. You know, we've stayed bigger than we were pre-COVID, but now we're, we've stayed pretty stable for the last, you know, couple of years now. So for twenty-three, twenty-four, we are continuing to stay on this, you know, pretty even trajectory of the stability of these numbers. So had a hundred and three thousand, three hundred and seventy-six to be exact completions. And then we're looking at about a hundred and two overall for the year. As I mentioned earlier, we are currently open for enrollment and will work with Cory and her finance team to nail down what our actual official numbers will be once enrollment closes in, you know, in preparation for the spring semester. So the high school will probably be ticked up a little bit. Elementary may tick down a little bit. We are seeing a trend where elementary is shrinking a little bit more than we'd like it to be. But, you know, we're just wanting to be sure that we are in the right place. And as Jason mentioned, we're thankfully, over the last few years, have gotten right where we need to be as far as our staffing is concerned. I know in the years past, we've had some of those numbers not where we necessarily needed them to be, but we're happy that they are right where they need to be. So that's where things are at there. And then just as far as back to the personalized education experience and as David was mentioning with school choice. In a prior board meeting, it was asked about, you know, what are the different ways in which kids come to us and the different types of students that we're seeing? And the different things that we're seeing just this week? We had a school reach out with needing their, they cannot staff their ACE program. And so they're looking to us to possibly teach their ACE, their Cambridge ACE program students. So we're, we are still seeing teacher shortage opportunities around the state where those highly qualified, different, you know, specialty area teaching opportunities, they're not being able to staff those programs. And so we're continuing to be a partner for those schools and those school districts around the state. Course offerings that are not available, again, like if they do not have enough students to have that course offering at that school, we are continuing to see those students come to us. Education and sports academies, I think, you know, Coco Goff is a very well-known student of ours who was previously with us. But we have a plethora of students from arts to sports to Broadway to acting. You know, you name it, we've got a lot of students and we work with some of those academies over the years. And now it's the one in Tampa, Lakeland. Why is that? There's one, the Tennis Academy, I think, was the main one. But we definitely, Larry Banks and his team definitely get out there in the state and work and bring those types of academies to us. And I think our flexible approach, they can train during the day and go to school in the evening or this, you know, whatever their schedule may be. So we continue to be a place for those families and we continue to seek ways in which to partner with those, those schools and academies. And, and we're grateful for the opportunity to do so. And I think that's all we have for you guys.
Yeah, a couple of questions on the, the numbers, especially in the full-time. I noticed that, you know, your K through five is twenty-four hundred students and K six ten, six through eight is twenty-seven. So this, going into the high school, you're increasing the numbers by almost fifteen hundred. What, what, what changed there? Why does, why are students coming out of middle school, essentially traditional middle school residential, coming into Florida Virtual School High School?
So I think when they get to the high school, there's, I don't want to, a carrot. There's a diploma. So I think when it comes to what we offer and provide, the high school is the one thing that does have a differentiator between flex and full-time. And so I do think when it comes to the differences between the programs, the high school is the one that definitely has that differentiator. I think high school is the place where, you know, kids are, I think, one of the key factors that I think we're seeing in the elementary numbers is ability to stay at home, right? Like a kindergartner cannot be home alone, where a tenth grader can be home alone doing school. And so I think those are different aspects that we continue to look at and see what makes sense. And are there opportunities for us to pursue to help provide families the support that they need, that they can have their elementary school student at home while they're doing school that maybe they don't feel like they, they can have? But yeah, it's, I think it's definitely just the ease of being able to have a high schooler at home drives our high school numbers up.
And then on your flex numbers, the, you know, this, is there, so a student can take a course, can be in a, in a traditional high school and then take some flex courses. Is there a common course numbering or is there equivalences that has to be looked at for that course to be taken back to the high school included as a high school diploma?
Yes, that's an excellent question. So about half of these enrollments that you're seeing here are coming from public school students, a little bit from private charter as well. We are using the same courses, same course codes, same standards that they would see in their traditional setting. So the majority of, at least half of these students are sitting in a brick and mortar classroom right now, taking a course or two on the side with us. And it's got to line up with what they have there so that it's, it's still the same standard and able to transfer over to, to their transcript. So yes, that's a great question and yes, it does align with that.
So this, this state provides a catalog of course codes for all the schools.
Okay.
Yeah, so we follow that and it's the exact same courses as what they would see in the full-time program. So to Katie's point, our home education enrollments are quite large for elementary and middle school. In middle, in high school, it starts to go more towards the public end. And a lot of those students are ones who are taking one or two courses, but some of our home education students then opt to go to the high school because they know they're getting the same courses, same model, but can get that diploma at the end of the journey.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I had a question. What is the biggest reason why you're finding that these students that are in brick and mortar schools are also taking a course with FLVS? Is it just a course that's not offered in the school program? Or like, what are the reasons as to why they select FLVS?
There's a wide variety there. But yeah, a lot of times it's because they can't fit it into their schedule. To Katie's point, when she was talking on the slide about teacher availability, sometimes it's course availability in their master schedule. So you might have a student who needs certain courses at certain points in the day, and it just doesn't work into their schedule to take a one-off course that might only be offered one time per day. Large group of our students are taking courses that maybe they've attempted a first time and weren't successful in, and they're redoing it with us. Some of them are just trying to get ahead and take a course so that they can jump ahead further. I'll use my daughter as an example. She took seventh grade accelerated math over the summer so that she could take Algebra One honors in seventh grade. So she was filling that gap, making sure that she could cover the seventh grade standards and jump to a high school level course a couple of years early. And that's, that's pretty typical of what we see there for the core courses. As far as electives go, there are some electives that you just don't see on a campus. Driver education, for example, that's our largest course. You, you just, that's not offered often, but there's obviously a need there. Hope, you know, PE forces, that type of thing, that there's a large demand for those. So it really is sometimes just that ease of, of scheduling and fitting that into a schedule or just something that's not available to them otherwise.
The last legislative session, they passed a requirement for incoming ninth graders to take personal finance and money management. I think everybody was very excited about, you know, our kids having a financial literacy class and that being a graduation requirement. It is a half-credit course. And the catalog for the state does not have a lot of half-credit courses. So my son is currently taking personal finance and money management online with us so that he doesn't have to find during the school year another random half-credit course during his school day to partner with that. So, and we are seeing a, a big uptick in, in families and, and schools actually using that in their labs and, and doing the, the personal finance money management course, so.
Yeah, no, I just see an incredible opportunity because it's, at the end of the day, it's ultimately to meet your requirements so that they're able to still graduate on time. So it, it just gives us a unique opportunity to, to make sure that we're out there and.
And I get students who would take these flex classes to get started with college, getting ready for college. So it's not all bad. Some of it is actually they want to move ahead. So I have two questions. The first one, I don't remember what year. I'm trying to remember. We talked about this when they used to have to take flex, all high schools.
Correct.
How, how many years?
Two, or second year of that not being required.
Okay, so you didn't see a big difference or change in enrollment, right?
Not much. We did see a decrease in a few of our elective courses, primarily in schools that operated labs on campus where they were checking that box to make sure that that student had that requirement. So there were some semester-long credits where you could check that box. The, one of the biggest courses that those students take is driver's ed, they're still in these airs, hope. The next one below, that was Algebra One. So we've really looked to see what students are taking. If they came to us for one course and one course only, what courses are they taking? It's driver's ed, hope, Algebra One, geometry. So you very quickly get into the core courses that are still required. And so I think the impact there was minimal. We were fortunate to see that. We were, again, acting conservatively with our numbers with the unknown. Not sure that we've seen the full impact of it, because I'm not sure how many people actually are aware that that's not a requirement. But regardless, when they're looking at that, they, they see the value of our courses. And I think that's, that's really the testament is that you see students who have taken one course and the majority of our students do take another course after that. So if we can get them here for one, they typically continue on for at least one or two, even if it's just supplemental. So thankfully, we didn't really see too large of an impact there.
And they will talk. I mean, they're all, you know, they had a great class and they got, you know, they got, they don't have to go do it. And they talk about it. I also know somebody in my family who didn't know I had anything to do with this. She did an ASL class during high school and she went to another one. Exactly. And this is nothing to do with this, but her mom told me and didn't know I was anything here. Her mom, we were dinner one night and her mom goes, yeah, she took ASL and she went to this FLVS thing or whatever. Those teachers drove me crazy, constant texting how good she was doing. And I said, well, weren't you, weren't you happy about that? Yeah, but it was like, it was, I said, yeah, that's a good thing though. Yeah. So everything they've told me is true.
Going back on the, the flags, the high school there, that twenty, two thousand one, two thousand thirteen hundred number, you must be touching every school in Florida, school district in Florida. Is there, is there certain schools that seem to tend to draw more students to taking an FLVS course?
To your point with flex, it really is across the state, students coming from every school and every district. I four corridor is where the majority of our enrollments are. And then Miami date, those are some of the, the larger areas, but really it follows the size of those counties. So we're the larger districts, larger.
Larger enrollments, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to push you guys.
Sorry.
For your own good, for your own.
We'll be around.
I can. People say too fast at times, so. Good morning, good morning. So I'm going to give you just a quick background on how we got where we are. Can you hear me? With the Florida Scholars Academy. So about a year ago, a little over a year ago, we started talking about partnership with the Department of Juvenile Justice. And I got really nervous. But Doc said it was going to be okay, and it is. Previously to us taking over the educational services, they were served by whatever district they ended up being at the residential play, residential provider. So you can imagine it would be thirty-six different districts doing thirty-six different things with these kiddos. So that's why they came looking for us to have a single unified system where everything's going to be the same. It's not that way yet, but we're getting there. Couple of things about the instructional model. From the beginning, we knew we were about to go in and do something we'd never done before, which was put teachers in buildings. And that was daunting. And it still has its challenges, but it was important to us to also do what we do well, which is online learning. So we blended the model and that started in September. Well, blending the model with the flex teachers coming in. At first, we were straight on, just the teachers in the building. We knew we needed to take a slow walk into that. In September, we infused the online teachers and we've had great success with that. We've got a fifteen to one teacher-student ratio. That was something they asked for. And we're still discussing that that could look a little different based on the number of people that the residential provider can have in the room to help the teachers. What was really important to us, and I'm going to turn it over to Julian, was the support that we always talk about, how we wrap around our students, ESE, making sure there's paraprofessionals in the room to give that extra attention. Julian has just hired six new intervention teachers that are going to be helping at the sites virtually. So for us, we knew that just the teaching wasn't going to get it. The support was going to be critical as well. We're seeing IAPs that are out of date. IAPs that are non-existent. It's really putting a load on the ESE team and they're doing a tremendous job identifying. We went in thinking it was going to be about sixty percent ESE. They had, they had identified twenty percent. It's really close to sixty percent like we thought. So a lot of work needs to be done there to identify those students and get them exactly what they need. And Julian is making sure that the staff is there to do so. We're offering our full course catalogs to them. We've managed to set up GED testing sites in how many places? We've managed to set up G E D testing sites in how many places? Twenty-two of the forty-one-ish sites and that is huge because imagine a student who needed to go get a G E D, but there was on a testing site where they lived. They had to be shackled, taken in a van, going to a strange place with strange people. This way, they're where they live, they can test. It's a much more relaxed environment for them and that matters completely in a situation like this. So that's something we're very proud of. I am gonna turn it over to Superintendent Kefron.
So basically, this is just a uh a graph of basically timelines, I guess, of where how we got here um today. So we started uh back in October twenty-three, I was brought into a meeting and told. Oh, that we're gonna do this. So uh very excited by the way of everything we've accomplished and where we're at. So in December, I was appointed um or announced at that uh at that moment in December. Uh and then from there, the race was on. We've hired over a hundred and twenty instructional staff between teachers and paraprofessionals. It is an ongoing process that we do on a daily basis. As a matter of fact, we have interviews today. So we're sitting here and I got a couple of people in the nugs and crannies doing interviews. It is an ongoing process for us to staff these facilities. Um and hats off to those individuals that dedicate their time, effort and daily lives, basically, to the education of these children. Um. So again, I'm not gonna read every slide to you, but as of today, I would like to say to you, we are serving fourteen hundred students in the DJJ residential facilities. Um. We've been in existence operation since July one, basically four months. So we just finished our first trimester on November first and we accomplished twelve hundred and seventy-three completions. Um. So if you look at the some of the numbers I was looking at, I'm gonna I'm gonna beat you guys, I promise you. So uh again, it's it's very satisfying, to be honest with you. Very, it's it's a huge goal and to see these children. Um. We're not allowed to publish faces and we're not allowed to, but we do celebrations and we just had uh a parent night, for example, up at Just and it was, the pictures were shared with me, obviously. Um. And it's just amazing to see these families and the smiles behind their face despite the fact of what these children have gone through. Um. So unfortunately, these children are I I hate to use the word, but they are imprisoned. Um. And they wake up every day at at a facility. So for them to be again, uh eager to get their education, it's really exciting to see it. We didn't know, I didn't know, I didn't, from visiting when I first went to where we're at today, a again, um hats off to the staff that we have and the efforts that they put in it. Um. I don't know if. So this is just basically some numbers. The current enrollment is thirteen eighty-four. That has increased. So the way it works is we get bed alerts every day of the week um as to what children are coming. So the same way they complete programs and they exit, they continue to come in. Right now, we're at just shy of fourteen hundred. As you can see, high school, we got about a thousand and three enrollments in high school. Middle school is a hundred and thirty-five. Of that one thirty-five, we got two children that are at elementary school, a fourth grader and a fifth grader that we're also serving. Um. Current adult students, the that means that they're on the G D track. That's what that means. It's a hundred and seventy-two students presently. Um. That's to end on obviously September fifth. Those numbers have altered a little bit. As far as actual graduates that are sitting in our facilities, we have seventy-four students. Those students are then served within our C T E suite, our career and technical education suites. Along with the department, they also partner with some of the colleges. Okay, so that that is uh of course, current course enrollments are six thousand six hundred ninety-six course enrollments and completions at that moment back in September, we're at one eighty-three. I shared with you now as of November first, we hit twelve seventy-three semester segment completions. And I believe challenges, the provider turnover, staff turnover. The providers, just like we are a provider, we're a contracted service. We're not going anywhere, so we're not gonna turn over, but a lot of these facilities do turn over providers. So I'll go in one day and we establish a relationship with a certain facilitating provider. And before you know it, we're going, we're traveling back up there to make amends with the new provider that is presently happening. Right now, we're about to open three brand new sites and that will be in the Tampa area. Two of those sites got closed due to an incident over there. They're gonna reopen next week on Monday, so we'll be there uh on Monday for that opening. We got Marion County is opening one of their facilities and the third one. I'm sorry, uh Redwood, Redwood. Um. So I wonder why the legal team knows that and I don't. So uh we we are uh encountering some technical issues with the internet. So uh again, we have established internet at all these facilities. I want you to understand that in some of these facilities, internet never existed. I mean, it was like twenty, thirty years and it never existed. So the fact that we've been able to establish a form of internet at most of our locations, I think we're down to six locations that we're still working on getting it established permanently. There is temporary internet at the place, whether it be a Ford extender or another method of uh internet capability, but we are again, um I think this week, to be honest with you, but it's it's this week that by the end of this week, we should have another three locations up and running. So we're slowly but surely getting there and it's a it makes a huge difference. The education is huge.
Question. So when you say locations, are these sites instructional sites have been that have been established and you transport the children there? Or are these just so the 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 instructors are going into these locations? Got it.
No. So again, the flex instruction began on September fourth, as Robin mentioned to you guys, progress monitoring and G E D testing going on. Um. Actually, we we were able to ramp that up pretty quickly as she shared. It is essential or one of the things that I really pushed for was to establish every location as a testing center. Whether it be G E D, whether it be S A T, A C T, C L T, which are all tests that we're offering at the moment besides their high school testing or state testing that that we do. Um. Weekly science experiments are happening at Orange Orange Youth Academies right down the road from here. Um. We have a teacher there that's science certified and she swears by it and we encourage her. Uh educational residential provider joint celebrations are increasing. So we just celebrated Family Day up at Just as one of the one of our locations. Um. And so we're seeing now that we have a family engagement specialist, a lot of these are actually being published and we are visiting those locations on these family days. And sometimes it's a Saturday and a Sunday. And our staff is giving of their time and they do show up. So again, they're doing a fantastic job.
So you 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 said there's ongoing hiring for this program. Is there additional requirements for uh teachers to be working on this pro the juvenile justice program opposed to the the FLVS regular program?
No, sir. The we we do seek certified teachers throughout the state. Some of our teachers are out of field at the moment, but they it's it's basically the same thing. It's so with that said, to your point, it takes a special purpose person to go into these facilities.
Yeah.
They like, they have to be there a certain time.
Eight thirty to four thirty.
This hurts me as much as it hurts you. In fact, I might get hurt the worst here.
That's why I'm not.
That's an incredible program. Let's honestly, let's just. But the oh my goodness, I think the the outcome. Just. Absolutely.
All right. Good morning. Nice to see you all again. Um. Just gonna do a quick refresher about procurement and contracting. Stop me, ask questions along the way. We don't have to go through every slide. Um. Essentially, all purchasing comes through my department except for maybe some small P card purchases. Uh. We run a pretty tight ship in that we really control how our funds are expended. We make sure it's in line with policy and statute. Um. We do rely on the FLVS board policy sixty-three twenty, which is one of the first that you all updated for us. Thank you. Um. We also rely on the Florida Administrative Code six A one dot zero one two, uh which is what most school boards use. So we do rely on the exemptions that are allowed under that administrative code as well as the other policies. Um. Just generally speaking, we have certain thresholds in our policy that determines how we procure our goods and services. Less than twenty-five thousand, we can get indirect quotes, move forward with what makes the most sense for the organization. Between twenty-five and forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, uh we request three formal quotes. Uh and then make that determination. It can be by a small committee, it can be an individual. And then over fifty thousand is our competitive threshold where we have to either perform a competitive solicitation, which is when you all award sometimes an R F P or an I T B or an I T N. Um. We can also use state contracts that have been awarded by the Florida Department of Management Services. We do rely on them quite a bit. If they've already competed at a service or a product, there's really no point in us recompeting it and using our resources for the same. So we do rely on those state term contracts as well. And finally, uh we sometimes enter into direct negotiations. Uh. We use this under the exemptions allowed by that six A rule that we discussed before. Any questions there? Okay. Um. I'm not gonna repeat everything on this slide. I think I just said it on the previous. So again, this is just here for your information if you want to put yourself to sleep later. It's great reading. Um. These are just examples of the, yes. Oh, thank you. Okay, we'll be really quick. Um. These are just some examples of the um exemptions that are allowed allowed under that six A. We have piggyback again where we can use another contract that's been awarded by a governmental entity. Uh professional services such as legal, academic reviews, things like that do not have to be competitively bid. Educational services and copyrighted materials, if there's a specific text or resource that is copyrighted, we don't need to bid that because you're not gonna get comparable items at the marketplace. Um. If we do a solicitation and we do not receive, uh if we receive one or less bids, then we're allowed to go into direct negotiation. A single source, if there's only one person in the marketplace offering it, uh emergency purchases, of course, anything that's prescribed by grant, regulated utilities or franchises, I T services, and this is where it gets tricky. Um. My friend Rob here likes to say, hey, can't I exempt a lot of things? Um. I T services are exempted only to the extent of things like enterprise systems. Services themselves are not typically exempt under the I T. So you'll still see a lot of I T items that go out for bid under under this. And then finally, insurance and risk management programs. We bid some of those anyways, just because it is a best practice, but there are certain ones that we can exempt and go direct to negotiations. Any questions on exemptions? Okay. Um. I'm not gonna read the slide. It's just interesting to look at our total process of how we go through the contracting. Um. Where we identify the need, we determine how we're going to procure the item, whether we're gonna use one of those exemptions or we're gonna bid it. That decision relies really with me and my department, but of course, in consultation with the requesters and and what the underlying factors are. Um. Once we go through the procurement process, we have the contract development. Of course, that involves our legal team as well, where we develop, we negotiate that contract about the contract, make sure it's in line with legal um form and get that approved, bring it to you. If it is over that threshold of three hundred thousand, otherwise the authority to approve that contract lies with Dr. Algays. And then once it's there, it's that management piece where we look at change orders, statements of work, uh making sure that we're getting the services that we requested and they're delivered in line with the contract. Um. Again, overview the process. You can look at it if you're curious. I don't wanna read every item from the slide here, but and then really, these are just some key considerations. Um. We operate in the sunshine. When we do a competitive solicitation, that is noticed and publicly noticed. Um. Our meetings are public as well when we're evaluating competitive solicitations. You know, we're subject to Florida Public Records law. A lot of competitors in the marketplace may request copies of our contract or if somebody didn't win a bid, they might wanna look at what the awarded contract looks like, what the awarded bid looked like. We get public records requests often for that. You know, we operate in the sunshine. Everything we do, we wanna make sure is public. We're promoting competition. We're fostering that marketplace where we're spending public funds. We want it to be an equal playing field for everybody. Um. We're also always looking at strategic procurement. We look at the priorities of the organization and start to pre-source. If we see that we're going down a path of A I, we know we're gonna have to look forward. How can we get contractors to support us in that strategic vision? Where are they coming from? How can we procure them quickly to meet the aggressive goals, strategic goals of the organization? So we're always really trying to look forward and and implement that. Uh. We have guardrails in place to avoid conflicts of interest. You know, every committee member that's deciding and evaluating a potential vendor, they have to sign a document that says, I have no conflicts of interest. I have no relationship with the companies that are bidding. We wanna make sure we have those guardrails so that we have a fair and and equal process for everybody out there. And then, of course, documentation and record keeping. Everything we do, we make sure that we have the proper documentation. We can find all our contracts quickly. We track their expiration, so we don't have any gaps in services and and things like that. And that said, since I had a pretty pretty quick window, I think that's all I have today unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. That was scary. We're just gonna go to nine fifty-five. I'll take the gap.
Good morning. Uh. Good to see everyone. Um. I was very excited yesterday during your board workshop because you were asking about policies and how what your progress has been in updating and converting our policy manual. And that was predictive because that's my quick segment this morning. So we are accredited by Cognia. It's a five-year cycle. Believe it or not, the cycle's coming up again in in another one to two years. And Cognia has key characteristics concerning learning, culture, leadership, engagement and growth. The Board of Trustees um fits within standard eight and key characteristic number two, and it has to do with your policy development and policy approval. And that's where you see me during the board meetings at first reading describing that particular agenda item. So it's through your work that you drive uh the organization through continuous improvement. Um. Your work will be our evidence when Cognia comes back for accreditation uh for standard number eight and that key char- characteristic number two. It's an important role uh as far as the accreditation process because your policy development drives the work of the organization. Uh. The impact of the policy manual, you set the standards for our operations since so many documents and practices flow from each policy that you approve. Um. You've heard talk when uh Chrissy Canitas comes from compliance, the administrative procedures, standard operating procedures, work directions, things like that. It all starts from each policy that you you adopt. But quickly, we have contracted with a third party provider, Neola, to give us templates, which is kind of a starting off point. We don't always approve the templates as given to us and certainly we're a little bit different in that we're a choice organization, not a traditional brick and mortar. But as you can see from the topic, it's it's the entire organization, all of our operations with students, of course, being the centerpiece of our policy manual in chapter five thousand. Through David's leadership in the Office of General Counsel, our approach to this work has been policy outward. It makes sense. It's the the keynote from which all things travel. And one of the first actions that the Board of Trustees took at its first meeting was to adopt its own bylaws to govern itself. And in the model of continuous improvement, um you've you watch your bylaws and when necessary, you amend them so that you could continue to operate efficiently and in the manner that you need to do. Yesterday, here's here's the money slide. This is the question you were asking yesterday. The for the policy manual at the very next meeting, June twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, is when the board started adopting its first set of new policies. Um. Since then, you've adopted one hundred and seventy-six new policies. Sixty-four of those new policies have been amended. Um. Typical amendments would be student parent rights, student progression, things like that. Every time the legislature meets annually, there's a slew of adjustments that we need to make. And of our legacy poly policy manual, we've repealed ninety. And of our legacy poly, policy manual, we've repealed ninety-six or retired them. And replace them in the new policy manual. We only have twenty left to do. So we've made significant progress in the conversion. This slide talks about our process as to what we do to get the agenda item ready for you. Um, obviously I look at updates, the entire team does and make notes of what I expect that I need to. Adjust or amend. I work with subject matter experts throughout the organization. Um, I meet with the contractor, Neola, to review and get their input. I meet with David. Get his input. I meet with leadership, Dr. Algays and the chiefs, and then the agenda item is ready. So it, it can take. It could be quick depending on the policy or it could take some time to get something ready. And as I mentioned, you set the keynote for our operations. I've mentioned earlier administrative procedures, but there are also very visible documents externally. Policies drive the Code of Student Conduct, the Student Progression Plan. And then the things that we publish externally, Student Parent Handbook, whether it's for full-time or the Flex Program. And the Employee, Employee Handbook, Full-Time and the Flex Program. So that is what the policies do for the organization and your role in reviewing and approving those. Is vital in driving the work and the culture and climate of the organization. Any questions?
Great.
I talked as quickly as I could because we're running, running on time.
German engineer.
Thank you.
Highlight of all Cognia thing, when they do come, they will ask to speak to some or all of you. And ask you about your involvement in all of these.
And now you know.
So listen, I just wanted to thank everyone here for presenting. It was great and for everything we needed to. And of course, we're here to help and answer any questions as we move forward. It's an ongoing conversation and I thank, uh, all of the members who, uh, joined us today. It really means something for this organization. Alrighty.